So I can start with the opening remarks. So as a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
And George Morris, I think we're still waiting for George. Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
And Town staff, when I call your name, please respond. Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
And we're still waiting for Kristen, her assistant.
Yeah, yeah, she just, yeah, she just texted.
Okay.
So she's on her way.
So for anticipated speakers and presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Michael McNiff?
Yes, thank you.
Bob Griffin, Griffin Engineering?
Present, thank you.
And from Governors Academy, Tom Woodruff?
Think they're going to be here a little later, knowing that 170 Orchard Street was coming first.
All right, fine, Martha, thank you. So this June 7, 2023, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter 2 of the Act of 2023, which extends the Governor's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, and which identifies how the public may join. You may join by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID number 83271413056, or by calling 1-929-2056099, US, New York, and entering the meeting ID number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel 9 on Zoom and at www.tncctv.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called, and I will interrupt to note George Morris has joined us. Good evening, George.
Good evening.
7:03 PM, and we just started the opening, George, and I'll continue with it. Now, let's see, me, as I indicated, meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, question, or emotions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or on your phone *6 to toggle mute or unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me. Taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. For public comments, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the Zoom Raised Hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the More function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit *9 on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the Raised Hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. And again, afford the participant, applicant, or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record, and again, the participant, applicant, or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And finally, please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call votes. So our first item on the agenda is... I want to start with liaison reports. That is the first item on the agenda. Martha, anything from the Select Board?
Yeah, I've got a few things here. I'll try to fill Leslie's shoes on this. But there are a couple of things of interest to the board and a few other items. So one, I just wanted to note that the board did vote to accept a grant of $341,000 from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, which will go towards the construction of the culvert on Orchard Street. And this is, this is one of the culverts that was identified actually during the Great Marsh Adaptation Plan planning processes, you know, as a barrier to flow. So it's great that we're able to move forward with this. Second of all, the board did reorganize. Alicia remained Chair. Bill DeMayo was Vice Chair and Leslie is Clerk. The Conservation Restriction Amendment for the 140R Main Street Solar Project was approved by the Select Board, and that has actually since been signed by all parties and recorded at the registry. So work is ready to go. Go forward and I'll report a little bit more on that later. Newbury is entering into an intermunicipal agreement with MRMAC to actually share our conservation agents. So Sam's hours will be going down to about 25 hours a week here, and I think it's 10, 10 or 15 hours for MRMAC. And the municipal building committee is going to be providing their final report or update at the June 27 Select Board meeting. That's it.
Thank you, Martha. For the ZBA, their last meeting was May 18, and they did approve a special permit to raise an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and to construct a new single-family dwelling on pilings with an increase in height, and that was a property located at 6 Olga Way. The next regular meeting is on June 15, and I've not seen an agenda for that, so I don't know what's coming up.
Yeah, I think there may actually not be anything on it other than reviewing and approving the decision for Olga Way. I don't think there are any new applications.
Thank you, Martha. So that's it for the ZBA Conservation Commission. Pete?
Larry, so last night Conservation met, certificate of compliance was approved. Request for determination of that ability was approved. Public hearing was initiated, but no action could be taken. And they'll be starting their meetings a little bit earlier. We'll be starting at 6:00 PM, starting July 1, and they're going to see about, continue with twice a month, but at 6:00 PM. That's a very short meeting last night.
Thank you, Pete. And Martha, MBPC?
MBPC, the Commissioners' meeting was held on... Let's see, I think I reported on this at the last time. So actually, there's nothing. Nothing for me. The next Commissioners' meeting will be the third Thursday of this month, whatever, whatever date that is.
Okay, thank you. We still have five minutes to go before we can open the public hearings. Martha, does that give you enough time to get into your planners' report?
Yeah, I should be able to cover most, if not everything, if you'd like me to go ahead with that.
Sure, if you're ready.
Sure. First of all, I do want to provide an update on the master plan. We're a little bit, the schedule has slipped a little bit. It's taken, taken a little time to incorporate comments from, you know, the working draft review. So we actually received it yesterday. Our hope had been to hold a public forum next Monday, the 12th, but there's not, not enough time to get the word out. So we're looking at alternative dates. I think we're landing on June 29 for that location to be determined. And we will be getting the draft master plan maps up online along with a survey, which is going to be asking people to review the vision statement and the goals, identify which goals are their priorities, see how that might have changed from 2016, and also identify any, any goals that they feel have not been addressed, and then all of that will get incorporated into the plan as, as an appendix. If there are any things that are, you know, clear errors or something, they'll still be, you know, there's still an opportunity for review and revision. So we will get the plan up on, as I said, up on the website, hopefully tomorrow, and I can also circulate a draft, a PDF to all of you if you'd like, like to have that. So let me know.
How many pages is that?
It's about 290 pages.
I don't think so.
About 10, 10 megabytes. So what we're going to try to do is actually break it down on the website, so the whole thing will be there, but it'll also be sort of broken down into, into chapters or batches. So if there's something you're particularly interested in, like natural resources or the executive summary or something, you'll be able to just click on that. So we're, we're working on it.
Good idea.
And then probably we'll be looking, you know, to bring that back to the board for adoption in July, I think. Let's see, look at my watch here. MBTA Communities, we're working with MBPC on the scope of work for their technical assistance. That's been sent to Mass Housing Partnership for their review and approval. Once they approve, it'll come back to us to sign the contract with MBPC, and we'll start, we'll start in on the, on the technical assistance that they're going to be providing to us, which will include identifying our districts and drafting the zoning amendment. 7 Larkin Road, they did provide a revised plan, and unfortunately, this is my mistake. They'd been hoping to be on tonight's agenda, and they had sent it a while ago, and it just kind of didn't, didn't happen for this one. So we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. 140R Main Street, we had the pre-construction conference yesterday, and that included the Fire Department, and Joseph Wodka, Kristen and I were there. Sam was there doing, they're planning to do clearing on Monday and then start, you know, they've mobile, they're mobilizing, will do clearing and then start into road construction. So I do have a schedule for that. If anybody's interested, they're anticipating that they'll be done by the end of September. And I think that's all I have. I guess the only other thing to discuss at some point tonight is whether we had touched on the July 5 meeting previously and had some discussion because it falls right after the 4th, and I believe Larry's not going to be able to be there. So whether we actually want to go ahead and hold that meeting or or cancel that one, so.
Martha, on the 7 Larkin Road matter, is that, is that going to be on the agenda just to accept the application, or?
No, they're still, they wanted to come back for an informal, a further informal discussion, following up on some of the suggestions that were made previously. They have put together a plan that shows, I believe, six, six lots with duplexes and a shared septic system. The good portion of the lot that, that abuts the river set aside is as open space with some parking.
Okay, thank you. I think you did say that. Okay, well, 7:15, so we can go to the first public hearing on the agenda, which is actually concurrent public hearings. These are continuances for 170 Orchard Street. Matt, our 20 lot 43A, owner applicant, the estate of Louis Bulgares, care of Diane Jekovic, continued from 41923. And there's the definitive subdivision plan application for Fields Way at 170 Orchard Street and the common driveway and special permit application for common driveway serving two lots on the proposed Fields Way subdivision, also at 170 Orchard Street. So I note the applicant has submitted revised plans showing a reconfiguration of the frontage for lots three and four and a feasibility, feasible, you know, feasible access plan. I believe it's called showing individual driveways for these two lots. So I'll hand it over to the applicant. If you could just bring us up to speed now on this, Bob?
Be happy to. I'll just share my screen for a moment, and the changes are relatively minor. But you can probably see the blue box now. There we go. And just to refresh our memory, this is the plan that we showed you at the last public meeting, and you can see these lot lines that go out to lots three and four. We're kind of narrow. And so there was some criticism that we couldn't demonstrate a feasible separate driveway alignment with those narrow lot lines. And so that's really where the revision occurs. So we'll go, here's the current plan. You can see we widened out those two lot lines. We're still showing a common driveway serving lot three and four. We've changed the lot dimensions a little bit at the cul-de-sac, and obviously it's wider again, as I mentioned. This little connection here is the agricultural access connection for, for the agricultural lands, for Essex County Greenbelt. And then the feasible access demonstration is the next graphic. So this shows how we can have two separate driveways, and we can have adequate separation for snow storage, and I think this sort of passes the straight face test on feasible access. You know, by, by making these two lots wider, we sort of, you know, we start taking over a little bit of the agricultural land, which is not favorable for Essex County Greenbelt. So to address that, we've added an easement in this area. The easement sort of shows up here. The green parcel A, you probably remember, this hatched area here is the new easement area. So this easement becomes agricultural access. They can use it for, you know, farming or accessing their fields or whatever they need to use. The common driveway basically has the same dimensions that it has had for the last several iterations of this plan. So no real change there. This shows the lot lines and shows the, here's that easement area again that I was referring to. There's the common driveway up above it with a little hammerhead at the end of it. And then this is the cul-de-sac. No real changes to the cul-de-sac. Again, there's that agricultural access area. You can see the new lot lines here and here for lots three and four. And then this is the entrance to Orchard Street. No changes here either, same as we showed you last time. So I think that pretty well summarizes our planned changes. I'd be happy to address any questions at this time. Oh, and I'm sorry, there goes, there goes the train. Sorry for that noise. There'll be another one in about a minute. So, so, and so that's, that's sort of the extent of our revisions. I'd be happy to address any questions.
I'm sorry, can you, can you just, we have quite a number of easements here. Bob, can you just go over those with us again, please?
Yeah. Let me see if I can get a better graphic for that. All right, so... Some of them are kind of small, but for example, we have a drainage easement here and here. So on both sides of the common driveway, we have a little drainage easement, and that's because there's a reinforced concrete drainage pipe that goes underneath the common driveway, and we want to have, you know, the party that engages in stormwater management needs to have access onto that little portion of lot three and that little portion of lot four to access the drainage pipe and maintain it.
And that would be who?
So the Homeowners Association will hire some party to do, you know, stormwater management and cleaning of the, of the pipes. They'll also retain somebody to plow, plow the road and, you know, do things like that. So it would, it would be in favor of the Homeowners Association essentially.
That was my question, yeah.
Okay. And so similarly here in lot two, there's a drain pipe that sticks into lot two a little bit. So we've got a little drainage easement there. Lot one, we've got a little drainage easement here. The Fields Way is a private way, so there's obviously utilities in Fields Way, but you know, those would, the Homeowners Association would have control of that. And then this is that, this longer easement area here is the agricultural access easement that I just mentioned because of the widening of these two strips. Then we have a little agricultural access easement that gets you from the cul-de-sac out to the field as well that crosses over this little portion of lot three.
Okay, thank you. Let me actually turn to Martha or Kristen. Have either of you had any further conversation with Green Belt on this?
We've had a little communication with Maggie Brown from Essex County Greenbelt. So she just, you know, did confirm to, she's, you know, interested in how the meeting goes tonight, and she did confirm with us that, you know, they continue to be interested in, in the property and willing to consider holding the agricultural parcel depending on its configuration. So, you know, that, that's basically their, their position right now.
And have, have they seen the, the most recent version of the plan?
Yes, Kristen did send, send those to Maggie.
Okay. All right, Martha, anything further before I turn to the board members?
Just a couple of questions, if I may. For Bob, on the agricultural easement, the little portion of it that's on the lot two, so that's where the, the agricultural access road would be off of the cul-de-sac?
Right. Lot three, actually.
Yeah, sorry, that's what I meant. That's not what I said. But then it actually would, would kind of turn up and follow, follow the long, the long easement on lot four.
Right, so they would, so if, I don't know if you can see my yellow cursor? But the yellow cursor is in an area that would, the Essex County would have an easement for, and this is their access road crossing lot three, and then obviously they would own this portion of the land, the parcel A and fee.
Right, so that easement is for the benefit of Essex County Greenbells, if, if they should be the ones to, to take on that parcel.
Correct.
And is there any easement for the benefit of the homeowners at 168 or the property at 168 Orchard Street for the driveway? Because that agent is actually not shown here on this lotting plan.
We, we have prepared an easement. I don't know that we necessarily described it in meets and bounds, but he would have the right, obviously, to access the private way to his property. So, so we're not, he owns his land, and then he has the right to access Fields Way through that easement.
Right, right, and we've got that document, but there's nothing actually shown on the plan kind of indicating.
No, I don't think we need it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Martha? Oh.
Nope, that's all I had.
Hey, I actually, let me ask you one more question. Any concerns on the feasibility plan about access, you know, public safety equipment and that type of thing, fire trucks?
Yeah, it would actually be helpful if, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's an awfully, awfully tight turn there, getting in from the cul-de-sac to the driveway that would serve lot four. I did send this plan over to the Fire Department. I haven't heard anything back yet. I, you know, I think with some, some tweaking, maybe it could happen. I don't know, Bob, if you did any kind of a sweep path analysis to show that a fire truck could actually get, you know, get around that.
We, we did check this radius and believe that it is suitable for an emergency access vehicle. And I suppose you could, you could even bring this entrance back a little bit closer to the, to the beginning of the circle if you wanted, but, but there's certainly enough room to make that work.
Yeah, I did, I did take a look at doing that and also changing the lot line. So it's not, you know, 90-degree angle right there where lot three is.
You could do that too, yeah.
So as long as it could, could keep the frontages. So if I may, actually related to that, what, how long is the frontage for lot three on this plan?
Hang on, let's see. Whoops, that didn't work. So it's 66 plus 64, so that's 130 feet, is what it sounds like.
Okay. Thank you, so that's...
Thanks, Martha. Anything else before I turn to the board?
Not right now, no, thanks.
Okay. Chair from our Vice Chair, Pete. Do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Sure, just a, Martha, I just want to clarify. So Essex Green Belt would only kind of give their, their full way in after they hear what the Planning Board has to, what their decision is?
Well, I think they want to see what the final configuration of that, you know, of the, that parcel is. And they still obviously have to go through their process. But they do, I think they do want the permitting to, to kind of be, be done before they'll make, make determination.
Okay, thank you. So we do appreciate the effort of getting Essex Green Belt in there. This is something that the board has always wanted to do is to promote this, and so that's great. Bob, to one comment, the board doesn't criticize. Board makes comments. So I wouldn't hope the comments would be taken as criticism or be interpreted as criticism. Our job is just try to follow what we're supposed to do. So we just try to make it all work.
I didn't mean it to be a pejorative either. I think it was, it was helpful criticism or friendly criticism or friendly comments.
All right, wonderful. I was just concerned with that chalk turn, and I think modifying that so that the feasibility study by itself could stand on its own, I think that'd be helpful, and that's all I have, Larry. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Pete. George, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. I was looking over the grant of easement to Ms. Kessler, and I was wondering if it's possible to put in a consideration, like $1 and valuable consideration, because no consideration is shown. The estate of Louis Bulgares is the grantor. The easement would be signed off by his personal representatives, but they are not the grantors. Beyond that, the, the connection between Fields Way and Kessler's property is, I guess I'm looking at the plan that shows it actually butts the property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so she doesn't need a stub easement. It's just an easement over the way because she already has access. What, going over her property line? Okay. Now, it's right to pass and repass for her, but it doesn't go on running with the land and for the favor of her successors entitled. Because if she passes away and the property is sold, it doesn't really mention that it runs with land. So I had some concern about that. So I think you ought to look at that if possible.
We'll pass that comment on to the attorney.
Yeah, I think that would help. Other than that, I have no further comments.
All right, thank you, George. Woody?
I have, I, I guess I'm looking for a clarification. So you have, like you showed us before, the easement for if Green Belt was to have the access to the farm. You show that easement crossed lot three, but then on this lotting plan here that we're looking at now, the easement will run along lot four where you're showing that it goes out to Fields Way? That's, that's, it's been on lot four?
Yeah.
Okay.
So so Green Bell will will own parcel A and C and there'll be an easement on lot three and four to uh provide them more space.
To get to it, okay. And then also the easement for out front on at um point number is it? The uh the Mac Pete Max property out front with the the house there.
Is it one sixty?
Yeah, there's no particular, there's no particular place. He's got access to Fields Way from the street to the back corner of his lot.
So we're gonna construct um this improvement here for them.
Okay. So that will be where his ease where his access to his property will be.
That's correct.
Show them that. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I don't I don't have any further questions right now.
Thanks, Woody. Uh, Mary?
If there is any backup plan to Green Belt, did Green Belt decide against this for any reason?
Uh, we don't have a backup plan at this point.
Does it look pretty good for Green Belt? Does anybody know that?
What's not to like?
I think Martha got the same representation from the Green Belt. I and personally, I felt that they were excited to get this land. They didn't want to make any commitment to it till after the approval. I, for whatever reason, I don't know why that was. They didn't want to make any comment until that time, but I think they were excited about it. I think the young lady talked to Mr. Um Herrick about it. Um, I think they were eager to have agricultural land, not just conservation land. But that was the impression I got, Martha. Um, I haven't talked to her today. We have talked to a couple of other nonprofits. There was an organic seed company up in Maine that would take uh land like this. I didn't get into it deeply with them. But when we were looking around for people to take ownership of it, and Green Belt certainly sounded like the best opportunity for every for us and them.
Don't be a five oh one C three.
I don't know what a five oh one C three is, but they were taking it in fee. Does that make any difference? A a donation to them taking it in fee. Maybe we'd have to have some type of number, a dollar or whatever it would be. But I don't know the entity that they take it under.
Okay. Thank you.
Larry, if I could?
Uh, please.
So uh Mary's just brought a really good point. Um what what would be Plan B? Should we uh and Martha, I'd like to hear your thoughts too. Um, should there be a condition that uh we would like this directed to a nonprofit uh or to a trust? Or do we want it to come back as an option for conservation? Just in case.
Well, I think, you know, one possibility might be, and I think this is similar to the language that we had in um another recent uh the well fifteen Coleman Road. There was, there was no commitment at an at the point that that was permitted to actually grant that or sell it, sell can convey the open space to uh Green Belt or another entity, but we did include the language that it should be. So we could probably do something similar here.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Thanks very much.
Welcome.
Okay, um Martha, have we received any written comments? Uh, anything that we should read into the record?
No, none.
No, a- any members of the public uh uh here with raised hand?
Uh, Melissa Mack has raised her hand. Actually, it looks like not Melissa, but.
Okay, um, there there you go.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I I'm using my wife's computer, so her registered name comes up. Apologies for that. Uh, just a couple of questions with regards to
Uh, could we get your name and address before you?
Oh, Pete Mack, I'm Melissa Mack's husband, one sixty eight Orchard Street. Okay, thanks. Uh, so we're we're at the head here and um we haven't received any uh you know, uh writing with regards to how the easement is going to be written. We'd like our attorney to review it as well. Um, we would like it to be uh in perpetuity, so to speak, this way when we sell the house, which is gonna happen. Uh, we're just not sure when. We'd like the easement to transfer ownership. Um, that's I would, I would think that would be an appealing thing as opposed to not being able to transfer the easement to the next person. Maybe stupid question, maybe not, but that would be one request. Um two, with regards to how the head of the driveway comes into the house. Is it possible to have it align with the house as opposed to having one parking space closer towards the street? If we could just line that up with the square, that would be solid. We'd appreciate that. That's uh, I think that's pretty much it. At one point, there was a traffic study request. I don't know if that was um ever done or not, or what the result of it was, but any insight on that would be cool. And I think that's pretty much all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think as to your concern about the form of the uh of the access easement, I mean, that's something the lawyers will have to work out. Your attorney certainly uh think you'd want to have him reviewed. Um, as to the placement of the driveway, I'd have to defer to the applicant on that. And um uh, we did have it, we did discuss um a traffic study at one point, but I think it was the sense of the board that it wasn't necessary. So any other board members agree with me on that? Or disagree, I should say?
I don't, I get Larry, I don't think there was much, there was discussion following that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I I was just, I was reinforcing what you said. I don't think the board felt that it was necessary or that it was brought uh uh to a motion to have the traffic study performed.
That's my memory as well, right? Uh, Bob, did you want to respond to this question about the placement of the driveway?
Yeah, no, no problem. We can shift that over as he requested.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I see Leslie Matthews' hand is raised, Martha?
Yes.
Hi, um, I was uh just wanted to come back on um the radius of the turn in the cul-de-sac and uh the degree that it would be into um lot three and lot four. And um, do you have an accurate uh description to be able to describe how like a a large emergency vehicle like a fire engine would be able to get down there. And my second uh question would be, if Green Belt were to take over the open land, would they leave it as it is, or would they provide that land to um local uh agricultural people to use um to benefit the community?
Take the last part there.
Uh, the agricultural part, we had had that discussion that she would love to have Mr. Herrick continue to do it. And we talked about if Mr. Herrick did not want to do it down the road, that Green Belt would would do the agricultural themselves. Uh, we had a brief discussion about putting a community plot out there, but I don't think that that had much traction, for whatever reason. I I I maybe just not having the public up there, but what Green Belt told me, the young lady, that they would keep farming it. They have the uh manpower, the equipment or the uh setup to do that rather than just keep it as um conservation area. Is that what you understood, Martha? Did you talk to her? Did she explain that to you?
Well, she certainly, you know, made it. And it seems from her discussions with Mr. Herrick so far that he is very interested in in continuing to farm it. And the intention is that it be be kept as as agricultural land. Uh, so if he were to choose not to um, there there would be, you know, some other other means to farm. And it's definitely not intended to be left as fallow or, you know, some some other use. If that answers the question.
It does. Thank you.
I'm gonna zoom in on the center part a little bit here. So the the radius of the outside of the circle, the paved portion is a hundred and forty feet, which is really much larger than you need for an emergency vehicle. They usually go around ninety feet or ninety-five feet. So we have a very generous uh circle size here. So emergency vehicles, large delivery vehicles can all get around that circle very easily. And obviously, they can come in, they can, it's, you know, not a one-way circle. They could come in this way and have essentially a straight shot out the common driveway to lots three and four. And at the end of lot three and four, you may recall, there's a hammerhead turning area so they can turn around and come back straight to the circle as well. So there's there's uh ample geometry here for emergency vehicles and large trucks.
Just as a, as an aside, I did send the um the common driveway plan to the fire as well, just to make sure that that it's continues to meet you know, their requirements and and what what they had agreed to. So I haven't heard back on that, but.
That, excuse me, uh Martha, you said we're waiting for a reply from them?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was breaking.
Okay, um, so let me, I just want to try to get a sense of the board at this point. We've got a lot of discussion on this plan and
That's, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Peter Mack has raised his hand again. If the comment is still open.
Yeah, apologies for that. Um, I just had one other question real quick with regards to how the homeowners association is written. Um, is that, I know Mike and I had spoken at one point with regards to uh us being exempt from, you know, paying into that. Is that gonna transfer ownership to the next possible owner of our home as well? Or is that just for the length of time that we are here?
In perpetuity.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I I think that's that's certainly the expectation of the board as well. That that it would run with the land. So let me turn back to the board members again. Uh, you know, we've had a lot of discussion on this. We had a discussion about reducing the number of lots in the subdivision. Uh, we've had discussion, um, you know, about uh, you know, public interest justifying the uh waivers. Um, let me just pose the question to the board members and Pete, I'll start with you. Are we comfortable going forward with the with this proposed four lot subdivision?
Uh, yes.
George?
Yes.
And Woody?
Uh, yes, yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I think that's five years since then, so. So Martha, what what's our next step here? I'm just looking for some, do we need to go over the waivers again, do you think? Or are we ready to perhaps um start thinking about preparing a decision?
I think it might be helpful, um, if if the board is willing to to go through the waivers uh one more time because there were there were a few that everybody seemed comfortable with, but there were a few that that uh I think there there was not unanimous agreement on. So if if you'd like me to, I'd be happy to put those up on the screen unless, Bob, you've got them handy.
If you have them handy, please uh take over the screen. I could find them, but I don't have any.
Yeah, I actually got them in your in your narrative, so.
Okay, so the first is uh uh section one seventeen eighteen C one G. I guess I don't have to read all the sections. The board may waive the environmental analysis requirement of subdivisions of uh five lots or less. Um uh Pete, are you comfortable waiving this?
I am.
requirement, uh George?
Yes.
Um, Woody?
I felt that it would be helpful to have an environmental analysis, but I I I'm comfortable waiving it.
All right, I, uh, Mary?
I think it's okay, not to.
Okay, I'll make it unanimous. Um, in the thirty-foot property line radius uh at the street intersection, uh Peter?
That's the one I have concerns with.
You still have some concern about that?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, George?
Yes.
Uh, Woody?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
I don't have any concerns. I think it's fine.
Um, I I'm okay with it as well, so make it, uh, well three to one, I guess. Um, the street location and alignment, the required minimum uh fifty-three feet right of way, uh Pete?
I'm okay with this.
Yeah, George?
Okay.
Uh, Woody?
Yes, I'm okay.
I'm okay with it as well. And the uh cross roadway cross section, uh Pete?
I'm okay with it.
George?
Yes.
Um, Woody?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Yes, and uh, oh sidewalks and bike bike walks. I I think we, when we looked at that last time, it was unanimous that that to waive that. But I'll ask again, Pete?
I'm sorry. I got distracted.
Sidewalks and bikeways.
Yeah, I I'm fine with that, Larry, thanks.
Okay, uh, George?
Yes.
Uh, Woody?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
And I am as well. Um, and the uh section on trees, uh Pete?
I'm okay with that.
Uh, George?
I'm okay.
Uh, Woody?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yeah, it's okay.
Oh, okay. Uh, I think that's it for the waivers, isn't it, Martha?
I believe so.
Okay. So what's our next step?
So I guess the next step would be if, you know, if the board feels that everything has been addressed, we could start to to draft a decision. It does seem like there's still some coordination that needs to be made between the drawings, like the lotting plan isn't isn't um
Yeah, and and I I'm sorry to interrupt you, Martha. I I should have asked the board. With the feasible access plan? Pete?
I'm sorry, Larry, you got a little broken up there.
Uh, are you, are you comfortable with the feasible access plan for the
The right angle turns, the right angle turns are to be modified turns?
Uh, yeah, well, we've heard from our planner that she feels it can be tweaked to make it work, so.
I tweaking is great. Thank you.
Okay, uh, George?
I'm okay with it.
Uh, Woody?
With the adjustment of that, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, and Mary?
Yes, I'm okay.
Yeah, and I am as well. Remember that that's just to demonstrate that it's feasible to do it. It's not that we're gonna construct that that they're gonna construct two parallel driveways, but just to show that that it's feasible. So may, uh, I'm sorry, um Martha, I interrupted you, um. So you think we could start thinking about drafting a decision on this?
Yes, unless there's anything else that the board feels is is needed in order to.
Well, I mean, there's there's a lot yet to be done. You know, all the legal documents have to be approved. We gotta get, make sure you know, we have language that uh protects the intent here. If for any reason Green Belt doesn't take this, um uh, you know, there's um, there's still a lot of work to do, but I, the the sense I'm getting from the board is that you know, we're comfortable moving forward, uh, you know, with basically with this plan.
Can you make a comment, Larry?
Sure, please, George.
Yeah, for the benefit of Martha, I know she has a lot to do in terms of doing up a complete uh proposed uh approval. However, she might just prepare a list of elements that would go into the final decision. Uh, which could be filled out as it goes along. So instead of doing it all as one item, put together a draft of different items that would be stacked up together to make it easier.
Yeah, that that's an interesting thought, George. And Martha, what do you, what do you think about that?
Um, yeah, so ba- basically that would be an outline, essentially.
A to-do list, maybe. I don't know what you want to call it.
Right, right. Um, yeah, I mean, I think it might might sort of depend on how it flows, but we could certainly start with that. And I think it would be helpful. Um, you know, if nothing else, to to draft up the uh you know, the 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 findings and the justification for the waivers um and also the conditions, because those might need some um, some work. Uh, also, I think in order to to um you know, do a You know, do a final ooh-lah on on the the subdivision plan, the common driveway special permit also needs to be. You know, some decision needs to be rendered on on that because the subdivision plan is. The final plan is dependent on on the common driveway.
Right, and that's that's going to take unanimous vote of fore voting members.
That's correct.
So if if I understand where we're at, we'll we'll at least come back in next meeting with um with proposed um. Findings and conditions for both. Is that where we're at?
Um, yeah, we could certainly start working on that. The other thing for the um, and I'm kind of jumping ahead, I'm sorry, in the notes here, but um. The other thing that does need to be approved are the the easement. Uh, reviewed and approved by town councilor that the easement and the homeowners regarding the common driveway for that part of it.
Oh, absolutely. I'd anticipate that be, that would be included in the conditions.
Right.
Larry, one further comment?
Please, George.
On the uh easement to the. Uh, prop, the driveway access feels way, in that you can include, I would expect. The provision that the uh person who receives the easement is exempt in perpetuity. Uh, from being under any obligation to the homeowners association for maintenance of the way.
Yeah, I I'm sure they'd like to see that in there, absolutely.
Yeah, that'll be helpful.
Yeah.
Larry?
Yes, Mary.
I think it's important, um, with deference to Martha's workload and questions. Um, just to have a an idea of where we are, uh, how far we've come. And where we are to have an outline, uh, a blueprint, uh, for moving ahead. Um, would give us all a better idea. There there's a lot, there are a lot of things that we've talked about, but. It wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to have it uh framed.
I I think that relates back to George's earlier comment, if I understood. Yeah, I I I think that would be up for discussion at our next meeting.
Right, so we can at least work on an outline. We might be able to get it flushed out more, but um. You know, fo- focus not so much on the project description, which is kind of, it is what it is, but more on. On the conditions and things that need to, um, you know, still probably deserve some discussion. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that that I I know I'm repeating myself in prior meetings, but this this is a difficult site and. Uh, I know they're, you know, trying to work within the constraints of the site, um. And we've had a lot of back and forth on it, and it's it's not been, frankly, for me, it's not been an easy decision, but I I think, um. I think we've got something we can work with and move forward with. Uh, so I guess, um, we would uh need a motion to continue the public hearing. On both of them, actually. Go ahead, Martha, I'm sorry.
Um, is is there any discussion that the board would like to have regarding the um common driveway special permit at this point or?
Um, I mean, what what would you want to do? Just go over the criteria again?
Um, and the board went through, went through the, um, I guess the questions were. Is the feasible access plan really realistic? That's been discussed. Uh, whether there's any benefit in in going over the purpose and intent and the findings again, um, those were discussed. I think they were. I think the discussion on that was pretty clear on how the board members felt, so I don't know that it's necessary. To go through those again.
I'm sorry, I I I don't, I'm not sure that it is necessary at this point. I mean, if you'd recommend it, I'd be happy to do it, but.
No, I think the board's opinions were pretty clear the last time around.
Yeah. Uh, let me ask the mem- members if they agree. Pete, do you agree, uh?
Yeah, I I think our previous discussion was beneficial. I just think making that diagram look the way it should look. So that we can say, yes, it could stand by itself, makes everybody happy. That's it.
George?
Uh, yes, Martha, will this particular element be reviewed by town council?
Um, you're talking about the decision or in town council? And certainly I can can ask town council to review it if the board would like to. I think very often, if it's something that town council hasn't been involved in during the permitting process. It's not been our practice to give it to her for review, but we certainly can, and certainly she'll be reviewing all the legal documents.
Right, so it might be good to have her look at it and pass on her comments to the board that we can consider and then go forward from there.
Uh, George, if I understand what you're suggesting, then is is that town council at least take a look at it to make sure that. She feels that it meets the requirements of a feasibility study under the.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, sure. And certainly do that, I would think. Thanks, George. Woody, any further thoughts on that?
No, not now, no.
Okay, and Mary? Okay, so I think, um, Martha, that we can probably entertain motions to continue these public hearings unless there's something you wanted to add or have some concerns. What date would you like to see?
Uh, well, the next regularly scheduled meeting is June twenty-first, so two weeks from today. That might be a little a little tight for doing both, but if we're just doing an outline, it might be feasible.
And it's up to you and it's your scheduling, you know, that we're that we're burdening here. Because July uh could be problematic too, especially if we don't. I have that first meeting and we've got an extension to August one, I think, on this to render a decision.
We do, so if if we don't meet on July fifth, then we're looking at July nineteenth.
Unless we just do one meeting in July, but right now, that's to be, that's further to be discussed. It wouldn't necessarily have to be on the nineteenth, but.
Right. And if we continue to the twenty-first, you know, we can see where we are. If there are, you know, at least have the conditions, we can, we can. We can discuss those and and then continue to flush it out and see where we are, if that makes sense.
Yeah, does, does that work for the applicant? Okay, I'm seeing a thumbs up. Okay, all right then. Uh, on the definitive subdivision plan, I'd, um. I'm sorry, that was June twenty-one?
Uh, yes.
Entertain a motion to con- continue the public hearing until June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. At seven fifteen P M via Zoom. Do I have a motion?
So I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Um, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, and Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, you're.
Yes.
You're okay with it, and I go yes as well. And for the common driveway special permit, likewise, an entertaining motion to continue that until June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, our June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three meeting at seven fifteen P M via Zoom. Uh, do I have a a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none. Uh, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, and Woody, I'm sorry, I skipped you. How do you vote?
Yeah.
And I vote yes as well. All right, gentlemen, thank you. We'll see you on the twenty-first and keep plugging away at this.
Thank you very much for helping, good night.
Uh, next item on the agenda, and we have the folks from um governors here. Site plan review approval application for construction of a sidewalk extension and pedestrian walkway and related site improvements to the governor's. Academy campus by Field Mass three thirteen Newbury Court Turnpike. Map R fifteen parcel eleven and three oh six mid- middle road, map R fifteen parcel five. Owner and applicant to Governors Academy, one Elm Street, Byfield, Mass, and this is continued from April. Is that, is that correct? April four nineteen?
Oh, no, 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 it's from from May.
Well, from the last time that we're here. Uh, so I think, uh, the last meeting, we reviewed the layout on the pedestrian walkway, and I don't think any serious concerns. Were noted and um. At the end of the meeting, we asked staff to draft the uh decision based on the board's discussion. I understand there have been some minor changes, but our peer review engineer has reviewed the proposed changes and the determined uh. That they are minor and don't impact the previous review. Is that correct, Martha?
Right, right, though he reviewed, I mean, the the changes that he was referring to were the the revised layout that we. Reviewed at the last meeting, and he feels that those were, you know. Acceptable in his professional opinion, so.
Sorry, I I didn't express it very well, but that was my question or comment. Uh, does the applicant have anything further to add at this point?
I I, Mark Bodrick from Civil Works New England, uh, we had an opportunity to review the um. Draft decision, thank you, and um. You know, we just, uh, you know, clarified some numbers, updated some numbers on on a disturbed area, length of pathway, et cetera. Uh, so there was some minor changes to update um to the current plan and um. The uh, we we found uh that the, you know, speaking for Governors Academy and myself, uh. We found that the uh, everything was acceptable.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um, Pete, is there anything you wanted to, any questions or anything you wanted to add at this point?
No, I'm comfortable in the fact that you also had no comments.
Uh, George? Uh, Woody?
I'm comfortable.
Uh, Mary, anything?
All good.
Oh, a- as am I. Um. Let's see, Martha, I don't, uh, have we received any written comments or anything from the public?
No, we have not.
And no raised hands, as someone is.
I'm not seeing any at the moment, no.
Okay, so I guess we can uh maybe put the draft decision up?
Sure.
Okay, I don't think, uh, I don't think that we need to read this through line by line. Um. I assume we have, the the board members have had an opportunity to review this, I believe. And uh, does anyone have any uh, anything on the um project description? Now, hearing none, Martha, you wanted to scroll down?
Sure. So this, I'll just point out, this is one of the, the area that's highlighted here is one of the. The uh revisions that Mark made based on the revised plan, so the length and the area of disturbance was was re. Revised slightly due to the new alignment.
Thank you, Martha. Maybe you can just walk us through this. Like I say, it doesn't have to be line by line.
Right, right. Um. So basically, it's the the description of the project and then um the resource areas. The path, um, the sidewalk on Middle Road, installation of the crosswalks. The next item here um was also revised by by Mark for the total length of rock path. Crushed rock pathway and the elevated boardwalk that was revised to one hundred and thirty-two feet long. And then, you know, we noted the installation of the forty-two inch high dark sky compliant light light bollards. The next section is the procedural history of when when the application was submitted, the public hearing dates and when the public hearing was closed. Next section is the submitted materials and information, so that's been updated to include uh. The revised plan and uh Joseph Walker's most recent review letter. And then the findings that the board made, um. At the last minute meeting, uh, going through all of these, which need to be, um. Make sure that that the uh plan is in conformance with all all the criteria. And uh, the board found that they they were with the. Project as as designed, there was one correction which Tom actually found, um, should have been dark sky instead of night sky. For the lighting. And then the the conditions of approval, which are, many, many of them are similar to the conditions that were in the original, um. Approvals for the, now the A C R C, uh, original project and the modification. And there were no, no comments from the applicant team regarding any of these conditions. I don't know if you want me to go through them or.
Uh, let's just, um, I'll just ask the board members. Uh, Pete, uh, you've had an opportunity to review this, I assume, and do you have any uh. Uh, issues with the conditions of approval?
I do not.
Uh, George, same question for you?
I do not.
Uh, Woody, uh, same question?
No, I I don't have any concerns. I've reviewed it.
And uh, Mary, same question?
So far.
No, I I I agree, I'm good. So. Martha, I think we can take that down, then I think we're we're probably ready to vote on this, um. Uh, I'd entertain a motion to uh approve the decision as uh. Uh, as discussed and amended into uh grant the site plan approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Peter. Is there a second?
Second.
George, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Mary? How do you vote? And I vote yes as well. So, oh, and lastly, uh, Martha, unless there's something else, I think we would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I think so.
Um, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pete. Uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none. Uh, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so it's unanimous. Very good, thank you all.
Excellent, thank you.
Get this, I'm sure we'll get this decision signed and uh and recorded as soon as possible, so we can get the appeal period going for you.
Perfect.
We'll just make those final tweaks and and get it signed, and I'll let you know as soon as it's been filed with the clerk and. When the appeal period starts.
Martha, can you remind us what, how long the appeal period is? Is it twenty?
It's twenty.
Okay, and that's uh calendar days, correct?
It's calendar days and it starts the the day after it's filed with the clerk.
Okay, great. Outstanding, thank you very much, and um, we'll uh, looking forward to getting this project going.
Good, best of luck with it.
All right, thank you very much. Have a great.
Hey, um, all right, next item on the agenda is old business. I don't think we have anything doing, Martha?
We don't, no.
Okay, under new business, we have a vacancy on the planning board, and I understand. Our associate member, Mary Stone, has expressed an interest in uh filling uh the uh. Empty seat until the next annual election. So do I have that right, Mary?
Yes, you do.
Would you like a formal nomination motion?
I think that would be wonderful.
I would so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Woody, and uh.
Martha, a question?
Sure.
Is this a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen or is it a motion to appoint?
It it, yeah, you're correct to point that out, George. It's a recommendation to the select board.
Thank you.
So that the motion would be to recommend to the select board the appointment of Mary Stone to fill the vacancy. Um, left by Leslie Matthews' election to the uh select board. So, is that your motion, Pete?
It it is, thank you, George.
And did we have a second? I think, Woody, you have a second?
I second that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, is there any discussion before we take a vote on the motion? Okay, hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
With great pleasure, yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
As well, yes.
Yeah, I vote as well, I guess as well, Mary. So, thank you for stepping up. We 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 appreciate it and.
My honor.
Look forward to having you on as a voting member, full-time voting member. Thank you.
Thank you very much, you guys.
Uh, couple. A couple of other, we do have some other, um, uh, votes to recommend. Uh, we need the, uh, recommendation to the select board um, for a, uh, planning board member to the Conservation Commission. That seat is currently held by, uh, Peter. And also M V C, M V P C Commissioner, which is Martha, currently holding that position in M V P C Alternate Commissioner, um, which is, I hold that position. Um, uh, we, what we don't have on the agenda is reorganization. We thought, once we have a full vote of, board of voting members, if we want to take up reorganization, we can do that. So Pete, uh, you're, uh, willing to, um, continue on as the, uh, our representative to the Conservation Commission?
If anyone else would like to do it, I will s- succeed to them, otherwise I can continue.
Okay, anyone have an interest? Oh, hearing none, then I'd entertain a motion to recommend, well?
I think I just saw Woody take a big, deep breath.
Yeah, Woody?
That would be interested in, uh, being the liaison of the Conservation Commission, if Peter was willing and wanted to take a break.
Well, it, it's not liaison, Woody. You'd, you'd be appointed for a three-year term as a full-voting member of the Conservation. Yeah?
Sorry, I used the wrong word.
Okay. Then, uh,
I would, Pete, if you wanna do it.
So you, you're comfortable with that, Peter?
I, I'm, I'm, I am completely comfortable.
All right, then I would entertain a motion that we recommend to the select board that Woody might be appointed as the, uh, planning board member of the Conservation Commission for a period of three years, term of three years. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, George, thank you. Any discussion? Uh, then Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Um, yes.
Mary, you're technically not a voting member yet, but do you concur?
I concur, and I want to thank Pete, and I think Woody's bad for this. Absolutely.
All right, and I vote yes as well, so, uh, we, we can present that. And, um, Martha, um, I, I, uh, you're willing to stay on as the M V P C Commissioner, and unless someone else isn't?
I, I am, but if somebody else has an interest in doing that, that's fine with me as well.
Nobody's jumping, Martha.
All right, then, um, I would entertain a motion that we recommend to the select board that Martha Taylor, our, our planning director, be appointed to a one-year term as M V P C Commissioner. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Any discussion? Then, hearing none. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
I don't know, I gotta take some time.
What's your opinion?
This is a tough one.
You can't vote yet. All right, I'm gonna take that as a yes. I vote yes as well.
Sarcastic, yes.
And lastly, um, the, uh, uh, alternate M V P C Commissioner, I'm willing to stay on again for another year, once again, unless someone else has an interest in it. Okay, hearing none. Uh, I'd entertain a motion uh, that we recommend to the select board that I be appointed alternate commissioner to the M V P C. So, period of one year. Thank you, Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yeah, thanks, Larry.
Okay, and I vote yes as well, so I guess we're set on those appointments at least, Martha, for now. Uh, so we've had the, been through the planning director's report. Uh, the last item on the agenda are the meeting minutes from May third and May seventeenth. Uh, does everyone have this year? So everyone had an opportunity to review them?
Yes.
Yes.
We good? Okay, uh, let's take up the May third, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Are any, um, uh, corrections, suggestions, comments? All right, then, is there a motion to approve the May third, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Any discussion, any further discussion? Okay, then, uh, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, you good with him?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And likewise, for the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes, uh, are there any comments, uh, suggestions for changes, amendments, et cetera? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pete. Any discussion? Hearing none. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Great for you, yes, for all the hard work. It is hard work. Thank you.
It is. Thank you, and I vote yes as well. So we have our meeting minutes approved, and it is now eight sixteen P M, and I'd, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to go home?
Yeah. I already, I already am home.
Okay, keep forgetting that.
So long, then I'll get there.
Martha needs to go home, so I will make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, I think I heard George first, so, uh, any discussion? Now, hearing none. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes, thank you.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, you good with it?
Tough decision, another time.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Thank you, guys.
And I vote yes as well, so we are adjourned at eight seventeen P M. Thank you all.
Nice.
Thanks for some, thanks, I.
Honor, thank you.